Okay, it's time to call this meeting to order. Everyone please stand for the legislative.
We present the lead by the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation in our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clement, if you'd like to lead us into tonight's opening prayer?
Dear God, tonight we ask for wisdom and guidance in making ethical and unified decisions for the betterment of our community. We ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
Coleman.
Mr. Clement?
Here.
Mr. Summers?
Here.
Ms. Tingle?
Here.
Mr. Duffy?
Here.
Mr. Sherman?
Here.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes, here.
Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the last regular meeting? Any council discussion on segments? Question two or three?
Mr. Summers? Ms. Tingle? Yes. Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Okay, we're not going to have the auditor slash treasurer's report tonight. Mr. Sattminton is ill. The mayor's court report and roll call, last mayor's court, I know that we we had about fifteen people show up. Seemed to be the the flavor of the night was no operator's license and driving under suspension. There were just a few, a couple citations for speed, but nothing other than that, so. With that, do we have any citizens' comments tonight? Oh, go ahead, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, prior to the new individuals at the police department, when their court was held, there was allowed to be ten dollars for the side for each case. That money was to pay off the computer program. Why was that stopped?
I don't think it has been stopped.
Oh, you said no.
It shouldn't be stopped.
She didn't even know about it.
Well, we'll have to make sure that that happens because we have to do software updates and we don't need to take that out of the general fund, so. We will make sure that that's corrected. Anything else? Okay, any citizens' comments?
Can I just do one without standing up?
Sure, can.
I think that what happened Saturday in Nelsonville shows a lot of good things are going to start happening with the parade and all that and all the people going to the games and then having people weren't even asked to come, but they did come and help get the field ready. That says a lot for this community and I would like to see that expand and be continued. Thank you.
That's a very, it was a very nice thing. I saw it from afar, so guys, thank you to the baseball committee and all the hard work that they've done, so. With that, tonight, we have two candidates. I'd like to amend the agenda to do potential do the interviews for the two candidates for the open council seat. I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to have that. Yeah, and also to amend the agenda to add ordinance twenty dash twenty-three. Zoom second.
Ms. Tingle?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Summers?
Yes. Okay, with that, I was interviewed in executive session. Does anybody want to do, I mean, that's how I was interviewed, was an executive session, or do we want to do them?
Do we have a due down here or something?
Do you want to do it here or do it in the executive? Okay, is that clear?
John Plowway.
Okay, all right, well, then we'll do it out here. Okay, all right, so we have two candidates tonight. One is Mr. Jonathan Flowers and Mr. Justin Booth. So I guess let's see Mr. Flowers first, so let's just go with him. You can just stay right there if you want to. Any questions for Mr. Flowers?
Well, ask the basic ones. Why do you want to be on council?
Well, I as some of you know, I do a lot of community stuff. And I just want to kind of do what's best for the town. Think of the city before I think of myself and other committee members or council members. I seem to have a feeling that that being on the council, and I could be wrong, but being on the council gives you a responsibility to all citizens. And sometimes I feel like some citizens get left out. Not, no offense to anybody on the council, but you know, I will do my best to help that process along. And like I say, I do a lot of I'd say a lot, but I do some community stuff, as some of you know I said, and I kind of just feel like it's time to relax the brain and kind of help the whole.
Thank you. Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
If you are elected tonight, how long do you think you're going to stay here in that position?
How what?
How long do you feel that you will stay in the position? That's a major thing here in this office.
Well, yeah, I would run for another seat if I'm, if I'm selected tonight, I sure would, yeah.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I have a question. Do you have any questions for council?
Your question is, do I have any questions for council?
I do, yeah.
No, I really don't, Mr. Clement.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Now, by accepting a council seat, I de-conflicted anybody's issues. I talked to our attorney today, so if there's any committees that you're part of that accepts money from the city, you will have to step down from those committees, correct? Okay, so are you willing and able to do that? Okay.
Now, you're talking about if I'm doing a function?
If you are part of a committee, of some committee of organization that receives money from the city, you will have to remove yourself from said committee. Do you understand what I'm saying?
So, but you have something in mind?
No, I'm just saying, do you have?
I thought maybe you had something in mind.
No, I'm just.
Are you on any committees?
No, it's one of the questions that I've been making sure we de-conflict everything, that's all. There you go. The Greyhound Park. You're on the committee, correct?
Well, I'm one of the organizers of the Greyhound Park.
Yes, okay.
Does the city still donate money to the Greyhound?
City never donated money to the park.
Fifteen thousand dollars came through the city and then it got washed to the Greyhound Park. So the city did give money to the Greyhound Park.
It got what, sir?
Washed through. It came in, we accepted it as a donation, and then we wrote a check back out, correct? Mr. Sherman?
Oh, it was fifteen thousand. I do know that they put in money for the haul of the dumpsters and whatnot.
Oh, there was money that was given and that went to the, went to the park, correct?
Yeah, from the Mayor Foundation.
Right, but it came into the city.
Yeah.
There you go, okay, that's all. Okay. Anything else? All right, Mr. Booth? Any questions for Mr. Booth?
I have one. You've been on council before and have resigned at least twice, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Why do you want to come back this time?
Well, right now, from what I see, this is from the outside looking in, I see a city that's on the verge. We could either become the city that we have the potential to be, which is evidenced by the baseball park, the successful opening they had. You know, the projects that are in process, the sewer plant, roads, all the different things that are going on. Or I feel like that we can descend into more of the pettiness and vindictiveness that's been kind of the hallmark of this institution for the last, well, ever since I moved into town. Just to be quite honest. I think we have a lot of potential as a city. And I think I can help that.
How long would you stay this time?
I plan on running in the fall.
Why did you choose to come in at this point?
Because I said, I feel like it's at a tipping point right now and.
So are you saying you don't think that the people on this council are doing a good job about you?
I didn't say that at all.
Excuse me, Mr. President, I thought the questions to the candidate was to be directed to both? Or can it be individual?
Mr. Flowers has not been on this council.
That's not my question.
Usually you, the code of conduct is to answer the same, ask the same question.
Ask the same question of both candidates.
Yes.
Correct.
I'm open to all the questions, I have the material.
Okay.
I'm going to have a look.
Is there any organizations that you're a part of that would be a conflict with the city?
Not currently, no.
Okay. Okay. So, I'm not on councils, so can anybody ask me a question here? Go ahead. So, this is for both candidates, I guess. So, what would you consider your strongest asset that you could bring to council? And what would and how would you kind of use that for the betterment of, you know, the community and the council itself? Do you want to go first?
Rock, paper, scissors?
I don't even know how to do that. I'm not that old.
If I didn't know, I said nothing. For me, it'd be, I think, problem solving. With, you know, the work that I do, a lot of times I've got to find different ways to either get around through through whatever the obstruction is. So, you know, getting consensus, finding problems as far as problems we can be solving and to bring everyone on board.
I, I, I just about think that would be an answer for me is.
I'm glad I went first then.
Is, owning businesses that I've owned in the past thirty-some, forty years, you have to be a problem solver. You have to look at things and be proactive, not so much reactive is my philosophy. And I think motivation is one of the biggest things that, that I could I don't know, bring to the council or I could motivate anybody here, but I mean, one of my strong points is motivation. BS. And just, I just think that I could get along with everybody on this council. I know everybody on this council with the exception, you know. But I think I could get along with everybody.
He's a good guy.
But I'm definitely not a yes man. Got my opinions. What's good for the city is my opinion.
Thank you. Thank you for your answer. Thank you. Any other questions for either candidate? Okay. Go ahead, why not?
Yeah, I was wondering what community work you've done and you will say, I mean, what businesses do you come from or what is your profession?
Question. Well, I, I grew up here in Nelsonville, down on Walnut Street, Lower Walnut Street. Moved away and was gone for thirty-one years. And I was a hairstylist. I owned a hair salon. And managed hair salons in Texas, San Antonio, Abilene. And really successful hair salons on my end. But that's where the problem solving that I was talking about comes in. Is having to have a bunch of hairdressers who are a little flighty anyway, and you have to be able to, you know, I'm a man, so you have to be able to, you know, really make a decision quickly and make sure that you're appeasing everybody.
I think you mentioned community volunteering.
Yeah, well, I, Mr. Sherman and I have done some events here in Nelsonville, the Benny's Campers Events.
Car shows.
Yeah, the lot.
Car shows?
Yeah, car shows with the Harry over there, and we've done the chili cook-offs on the square. So we've, we've done a lot of stuff. And the basic thing that we, Mr. Sherman and I have done it and we've talked about it was to bring businesses to the community, to the square. And however, sometimes doing those businesses, doing those things on Saturday, some of the businesses don't open on Saturday. So, but, you know, we, we just kept trying.
I'm the service director for Mark Porter Auto Group, so kind of the same with Mr. Flowers' business. You know, I've been in since it was small and we've built it up and a lot of it's problem solving processes, things like that. Smartest community. I've coached youth basketball, junior high basketball, JV softball last year. We'll talk about that record that I ran. I, I ran Nelsonville York Youth Basketball Program for six years and also the Hockey Valley Basketball League. Also filled in for almost two years on Nelsonville York Board of Education. Amongst other things that my wife hasn't helped with Rotary and things like that as well, so. I just go where I'm told.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, do we want to go and executive discuss or just vote? Okay.
Should we step out?
No, 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 it's all in public, so. All right, motion for Mr. Booth to be to the open council seat.
So move.
Are we voting?
Oh, just, is it for the motion?
Second.
We're just going to do them individually?
Sure.
Over call?
Yep.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
No.
Ms. Sonic?
No.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Summers?
Yes.
Ms. Tingle?
No.
Okay, Mr. Flowers? Motion for Mr. Flowers? I'll second.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
No.
Mr. Summers?
No.
Tingle?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
No. Okay. All right. So, no one's appointed.
Well, no, I think now you would go into executive session and you would talk out.
I don't know if there's any talk, we can go into exec, we got an executive session on the schedule, so. Okay. Department updates, who do we have tonight? Mr. Barber, Chief Barber, the floor is yours.
All right, well, we still have the six hundred and thirty-five clarified positions, the test day scheduled, and day seventeen, July thirty. An application package is still available till the fifth. We're still partying with Red Cross for smoke detector installation program. This is for all city residents and of course, we must do an assessment and install those detectors ourselves of the fire department. Currently have still a number of grants out and I'm waiting on award letters or denial orders from. And we talked about the FM Global Fire Prevention Grant for rugged laptops to replace the surface sprays that we have now. There's a surface spray we're actually writing for first of the grants as well. A firefighter exposure environmental elements grant, which is another matching grant from BWC. That's going to be replacement of those gloves. That's a little over five thousand dollars, the gloves and hood that we can purchase through a five-one matching grant, so they pay out four thousand two hundred and seventy dollars and eighty-three cents, we pay the rest for those items. We still have actually, we're starting to get deliveries in for that grant award right now. Still waiting for the rest of those items. The BWC Safety Intervention Grant, which is a three-one matching grant. And that was the grant that was awarded for the Strongarm Combat Tool, which is another extrication tool. The payout for that is five thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents. That tool was actually in route probably six to eight weeks. Transcending the Grant, that was going to be towards some repair work on Engine Fifty-One. That grant was not awarded. And the EPG grant, which is another thousand dollars towards an AED purchase. The AEDs we're replacing right now are roughly one thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. That pays out a thousand dollars a time, no more. So that thousand dollars is going towards the purchase of another AED. Since last update, structure fires are finally tapered off. We actually respond to a lot more structure fires than now because Athens County has what they call a matching away program. So each time there's a structure fire or smoke inside a residence, they send out that fire department and two other surrounding departments on their run car respond to that until the home jurisdiction fire department can make a correct assessment of the fire and determine what's going on. The fire has started to taper off. Trainings, trainings that are above, the daily shift trains that are low. Since the last update, we have another one firefighter that's currently finishing up the E P class. I just finished up the two-day emergency operations center, all hazard training, out through Texas A and M. It was actually myself and Chief Oliver on that two-day class. Of course, that's a partnership with Henry Security and FEMA. Just, just had an eight-hour Norfolk Southern Rail Response Train on April eighth. I've got a joint terrorism task force response. And this is basically going to be a response to the internet-based bomb threats. That's going to be scheduled on May third. It'll comprise every three-day period. And we'll be attending an active shooter, a campus emergency aggressor or active aggressor blast on June twenty-first. And of course, this past weekend, the fire department escorted the, all the baseball league participants and fan members from the Public Square to Polly Hill to kick off the baseball season.
Do you know, any questions for Chief Barber?
Tunnel to Towers is Sunday, yes?
Yes.
Yeah, Tunnel to Towers.
Just thought I'd throw that out there.
So Tunnel to Towers is Sunday. The Five K starts at nine AM. Our fire department and Tunnel to Towers crew will be on the square about roughly a little after seven setting up. The maps and the routes and everything are posted on our Facebook page as well as Tunnel to Towers page. And I think last time I saw, about four hundred people have signed up and usually they expect another rush of people signing up the day of the Five K. Again, this is not a city sanction, it's not a city run event, it's not a fire department run event. I want to make sure everybody knows that it is actually a Tunnel to Towers event. We helped set that up, helped facilitate it, and most of our members will be participating again.
Do you have, do you need more help with it for Sunday or do you have enough people?
Most of my department actually will be participating in the Five K. We're going to, we'll set up a little after seven in the morning. I think that we're going to be okay. But I know that the Tunnel to Towers Foundation, I'm sure would take anybody volunteering to help out.
Okay. Thank you.
How many did you have last year?
I think there was around four fifty and of course, the forecast last year kind of put a hamper on that and it looks like we might have a similar forecast this year.
You said something about Engine Fifty-One, that's the one that the motor was rebuilt in?
Yes.
Okay. How is your other trucks? Are there, is there any pending maintenance that you can anything that you can foresee that's going to be, need to be done with any of the other trucks?
I know we've got all the oil changes and everything done for the year. My second engine has a they think it's either a booty head gasket or a valve cover gasket. They are unsure exactly what is leaking. We're not losing any type of performance or anything like that, but we are seeping oil out of that international. We have had a lot of problems with Fifty-One since the day we brought it in. Tracking down external port leaks. As a matter of fact, right after the engine was rebuilt, when it suffered catastrophic overheat failure on a fire, we had Cummins come down again and they found the water neck on the side of the block that they have been leaking for a long time. You can't see that because those engines are so tight in the frame. When they do the overhauls, they actually do the overhauls on a jig and the overhaul is done in the frame in the chassis of the vehicle. They changed that out. We still had interfreese leaking. They changed the water pump out because the water pump replacement actually was not for the overhaul because there's overhaul inside why the, why the block is actually in the, in the frame. This came down and did that and we just been tracking some hoses and stuff right now. The truck is running good, we're keeping in contact with Cummins right now. Everything is under warranty now. The only thing that wasn't covered under warranty was the water pump replacement because that wasn't that was out of warranty, not something that they replaced on the overhaul. I've got one truck that when I get that information back on that, I'll know for sure whether I've got a head gasket that's leaking or a valve cover gasket.
Okay, anything else? All right, any more questions for Chief Barber? Thank you, Chief. Okay, and with that, we're on to second reading, ordinance seventeen dash twenty-three.
An ordinance establishing policy and procedure for charging customers a bounty for checkbook for the card payments that bound.
Okay, any council discussion on said ordinance? Motion to adopt.
So move.
Second.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Summers?
Yes.
Ms. Tingle?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance eighteen dash twenty-three, need someone to introduce it, please?
I will.
Thank you.
Second. An ordinance tentatively awarding the construction contract to D V Weber Construction Incorporated subject to final approval of funding for the project from the Ohio EPA declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Nelsonville seeks to complete the water system improvement phase two project. And whereas the city of Nelsonville has applied to the Ohio EPA for a portion of the funding for the water system improvements phase two project. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville that the city of Nelsonville tentatively awards the construction contract to D V Weber Construction Incorporated in accordance with the engineer's bid recommendation letter, subject to final approval of funding for the project from the Ohio EPA. The foregoing ordinance was adopted and all section, and all actions and all deliberations of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio were conducted in open meetings to the public in compliance with all applicable legal requirements, including section one twenty one point twenty-two of the Ohio revised code. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point thirty because the immediate passage of the ordinance is necessary so that the necessary paperwork for the water system improvement phase two project can be timely filed. This ordinance shall be in full course and effect upon its adoption. It will enact by council at first reading after suspension of the rules the twenty-fourth day of April, two thousand twenty-three.
Okay. Any council discussion on said matter? Okay. Motion to suspend?
So move.
Second.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Summers?
Yes.
Ms. Tingle?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Summers?
Yes.
Tingle? Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Ms. Sonic?
Mr. Sonnen?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Right. Okay, uh, ordinance nineteen dash twenty-three, need someone to introduce it, please? Neil, introduce.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to apply for, accept and enter into an Ohio EPA water supply revolving loan account agreement on behalf of the city of Nelsonville for design of the water system improvements phase three project and design meaning a dedicated repayment source for loan financing and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Nelsonville seeks to sign the water system improvement phase three project. And whereas the city of Nelsonville intends to apply for Ohio EPA water supply revolving loan account loan financing for the project. And whereas the Ohio EPA requires the government authority to pass legislation to apply for loan financing and the execution of an agreement as well as a dedicated repayment source for loan financing. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio. It is necessary to complete the design of the water system improvement phase three project for the health, safety and welfare of residents of the city of Nelsonville. It is necessary to apply for design financing from the Ohio EPA water supply revolving loan account. The city manager of the city of Nelsonville will be and is hereby authorized to request from the Ohio EPA water supply revov- revolving loan account the financing required to complete the design of the project. The method of repayment of design financing from the Ohio EPA water supply revolving loan account shall be water revenues generated from Nelsonville water customer. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point thirty. Article four, sections four point zero nine through four point one one as an emergency in the operation of the city government and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals or welfare of the city. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. It will enact by council on first reading after suspension of the rules the twenty fourth day of April, two thousand twenty-three.
Any council discussion on this ordinance? Mr. Betts, how is the sewer plant coming along? Any updates on the back ordered parts that were?
Well, uh, the one, the, so there's two back ordered parts that are, uh, primary driver. Motor control center one and two, motor control center one shipped last Thursday. The second one's scheduled for May twenty fourth to ship. So at that time, I'll be able to give you a more definitive answer. Unfortunately, we're probably two months after that before we can start to plan up. These, these, uh, you've seen these big gray electric boxes and, and power plants are facilities, so the motor control centers. So they contain the starters that start the motors for the various equipment. And, uh, for example, one clarifier, uh, the starter is driven from MCC one. The second one's driven from MCC two, they split the loads to divide the electric loads between them. And so it's just getting the first one here doesn't help us get it started up, we need both of them. What it does do though is allow the electricians to get the things wired in, um, and begin that process, so um, you know, uh, probably July's, uh, if we're, if we're running in July, we're doing pretty good at this one time, so. Like I say, another month, I'll be able to give you a better update.
Okay, well, at least the parts are one shipped and one done ETA on it, that's, that's a, that's a plus.
It's better than we were a month ago.
All right, sounds good. Any more questions for Mr. Betts or anything?
Yeah, so how does that affect our sludge? At the current?
Processing.
Well, I can say, um, uh, they've had some significant expense, I wanna say in the neighborhood of sixty thousand dollars this year. It's in December and March, they press a list about every three months. We've, uh, we've, uh, sent that cost to the funding agency, the grant loan funding agency USDA. And they have agreed to pay for those due to the delay in the project, so they're paying for that expense right now.
Good budget.
Thank you. Yeah. A- as well as some pump rentals and various other things that are directly result of this delay.
Thank you. That's good to hear. That's really good news, yeah. All right, um, motion to suspend.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Yeah. Ms. Tingle?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Sonnen?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Summers?
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
So moved.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Sonnen?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Summers?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. I'm working on order to ordinance twenty dash twenty-three. Need someone to introduce it, please?
I will.
Thank you.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a professional services agreement for the Nelsonville Downtown Revitalization Washington Street Section Project and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Nelsonville is in the process of a Nelsonville Downtown Revitalization Washington, Washington Street Section Project. Whereas the city was awarded grant funding for the sub grant agreement with Survivor Advocacy Outreach Program. Whereas an engineering agreement is necessary to be executed for professional services to complete the project. Whereas the professional services agreement Nelsonville Downtown Revitalization Washington, Washington Street Section is attached and included as exhibit A. Whereas the contract for the total amount is for a total amount of one hundred sixty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars. Whereas the city manager needs to enter needs authority to enter into the professional services agreement Downtown Revitalization Washington Street Section. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio. The city manager of the city of Nelsonville is hereby authorized to enter into the agreement Nelsonville Downtown Revitalization Washington Street Section attached as exhibit A and an amount of one hundred sixty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars for the work to complete the Nelsonville Downtown Revitalization Washington Street Section Project. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point thirty, article four sections four point zero nine through four point one one as an emergency in the operation of the city government and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals or welfare of the city and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. It will enact by council on first reading after suspension of the rules this twenty fourth day of April, two thousand twenty-three.
Okay, any council discussion on said matter?
I've got a question, I, I read through it, but I don't fully understand what the project is.
This is a project that we had put forward with S A O P. Um, it's last year, I believe, the end of last year, is a, uh, redoing, I believe, the sidewalks. And the lighting, they're gonna put lighting like there's somewhat similar to what's on the square all the way down Washington Street, all the way to the end. So it's basically a beautification.
Okay, and they run all that water underground? It's a one point four million dollar grant?
Yeah, so they, I'm sure they'll.
I, I read through it, I just didn't fully understand what, what the full scope, what the full scope was being put in. What sidewalks were being torn up off.
So basically, it's a separate phase of, of what they did to the square.
Makes sense.
Back when the, uh, Smodot did this, did the square up here, they underestimated the project and broke it into phases. This is the second phase, I'll finish up that original.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah, it'll look really nice once, uh.
Oh, I just need to, thank you, so I had a comment too to this, uh, this ordinance. I actually had two other ordinance, I had, uh, ordinance emergency orders that didn't make it, uh, on this, this was to basically use set up a revolving, uh, account, uh, using the Betty Johnson Fund. Kind of fund this, but I guess that'll have to take place.
Yeah, the, uh, we talked about that, Bernie called me one day and we discussed it and basically this loan is a, this is a different style project than what we're used to, usually you're just awarded the money. So rather than take like a, a branch loan off of an investment that we have because the money's gonna come back to us, but we have to have the money to start, so it is you know, he wants to use five hundred thousand dollars of the Betty Johnson trust to get the, the project started and we will be reimbursed from the project. And that money will go back, which is a smart thing to do, therefore we're not tying up any of our other resources, so. And, and it will be replenished as we spend it, as the project is.
We'll spend the chunk, get a chunk back.
Exactly, but he wants to use.
Yeah, we just wanted to have, okay, so.
Save money.
Yeah, we, we wanna have that set up so that we have all our ducks in a row. Uh, but I was gonna report out in my city manager's report that we, we are also in discussions with Hapcap who is also in position to fund this project for us and basically administer, administer the project uh, in conjunction with B L Z and ourselves, so, but we don't have you know, there's so many moving parts with this. Uh, so just laying the groundwork, having the emergency order in place, we use that uh, fund as a line of credit or, you know, use Hapcap to fund the project. Get the work done is another alternative as well. And with this ordinance that you just read, uh, fifty-six thousand on that, correct me if I'm wrong, is the design phase.
Yeah.
So the rest of that money, uh, you know, is, is there for engineering, which we probably wouldn't tap into anyways. Right, Michael? Uh, well, the design is fifty-six, uh, thousand three hundred. The remaining one twelve five hundred is for construction services. Right. Where we would be, uh, having an inspector on site, quite. Uh, managing the contract, giving, they request that stuff. But the initial need would be for the design because you have that design done and you have to have the funding in place to really dot the i's across the t's for this project. Uh, to meet the ninety day, uh, shovel ready requirement, so. It was indicated that we have preliminary designs in place based on the work that another engineer did for the square, but it's not complete. So that has to be completed and then we have to have a, a bid, uh, well, a bid in place within ninety days if we can't get somebody to bid on the job and they're willing to make exceptions and extensions to work with us. And that, that project is for this year, correct? Uh, it will start sometime this year, within, whenever they define when the ninety day bell rings we'll, we'll, we need to be.
Ready to go.
Shovel ready. And all the money in an early Betty Johnson Fund will be done through ordinance, correct? Well, we're here to set up the, the Betty Johnson Fund as a revolving line.
A revolving line of credit. You know, be able to the city manager to manage that revolving line of credit and make sure that it is replenished.
Okay.
All right, any more questions? Okay, all right, motion to suspend?
So moved.
One second.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Sonnen?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Summers?
Yes.
Ms. Tingle?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Mr. Sonnen?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Summers?
Yes.
Ms. Tingle?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sonnen?
Yes.
Okay, that's all the ordinance, all right, uh, city manager's report, Mr. Wolf?
Okay, great. Uh, I've got a few things to, uh, update everybody on. Uh, the trailer that was on Ryan Street, if you haven't noticed, it's been on the news. That was pulled out last Saturday, I believe, so that's, uh, I don't know if we could take off our list. So, um, I looked through the pool manager resumes that came in, I talked with a couple of, of potential candidates and I actually uh, offered a job to, uh, Miss Heidi Brooks. She accepted the position, so she'll come in, uh, this week to kind of do some of the paperwork, she lives in Gloucester, she's a teacher. She's very excited about the opportunity and she was, you know, uh, recommended by Leslie as senior or somebody that she thought would do a great job as well. Um, I'm I'm also looking at, uh, uh, hiring a, a head lifeguard slash assistant pool manager that'll come out of the lifeguard budget to help with you know, the, the number of hours and, and making sure that we have more or less an adult uh, at the pool whenever it's open. Uh, I know from talking with Jason uh, that was a little bit lacking, you know, last year where he had to kind of step up and be there like when we do pool parties, so I, I don't wanna really you know, not have somebody as an adult be there. So that will be a mid level position between pool manager and, and lifeguard. And we have the budget for that, I had Ted at pool, what the expenses were last year. Uh, we've got all the the work done by, uh, A D L. Uh, the grinding of, of the cracks that Jason said that they'll be back again probably next week to touch up a place that they noticed was lifting and then, um, Jason's, uh, got the, the mortar, I think there's a different name for it, that he'll go fill the cracks in, it'll cure for seven days and then we can start the process of cleaning the pool and filling it. Uh, the lady on Watkins Street who is staying in her tent because of, uh, the house issue, um, her, uh, integrated services manager, uh, reached out to me and, and, uh, they're working on helping her find a place, uh, to live. So, um, she's got a voucher and last I talked with Beth, uh, they found a place that would accept it, she was gonna go and look at it, she was gonna call me this week, find out um, if everything went well, it just has to be, uh, hot approved. There were two condemned houses taken down, um, uh, last week and this week, two thirty-four West Washington and eight twenty-three Walnut Street. Uh, they were just being finished. Uh, you know, removed, I mean, filling in the, the foundation and uh, strong grassy put down, I'm gonna check that out, uh, tomorrow. Uh, I, I got word from ARPA, which is the American Rescue Plan. Uh, it's a retention bonus for police and fire. Uh, that is in the final steps, they asked for me to update uh, the list that was provided to them of the, uh, police and fire employees that were here, uh, in, um, June of twenty twenty-two. Um, so there's potentially, um, it's not finalized, but if if it pays out at ten percent, there would be, uh, like forty-two thousand in bonuses that would go to, uh, employees that were here during the COVID crisis. Um, so I was, uh, planning on trying to put a public notice out with regards to, uh, lawns in, in the area, reminding people that if, uh, you know, the grass is longer than eight inches, you know, that's against code and getting a notice sent to them. That's really all I have, I think we covered some of the other items I was gonna talk about. Any questions? Yeah, the comment concerning, uh, mowing, don't blow the grass clippings out of the street. There's actually an ordinance against that, am I correct?
There is.
Yeah. Don't do that. That's all I have.
Not a peep to that.
Yeah.
And the tent lady is gone. Yeah.
Oh, the tent's gone?
Yeah.
Unless you don't think that move?
Yesterday, they were taking it down and moving around yesterday.
Okay. So I guess the question becomes can she come back? I mean, we talked. There's a, there's a camping ordinance, there's a tent ordinance. There is. There's an ordinance on, on hand, uh, it can only be up so many days, I don't know, but, so.
All right. Okay, with that, uh, we're off to the good of the order, Mr. Clement?
Yeah, the only thing I have.
Oh, sorry, Devon, go ahead Devon, sorry, I didn't see you.
We're gonna move like an officer or that?
Oh, yeah, um, what is the officer's name?
Bryce Chesser.
A motion to hire Bryce, Officer Bryce Chesser uh, pending, our full-time officer, provisionary pending his civil service test passup. pending, a full-time officer, provisionalary, pending his civil service test passup.
So moved.
One second. All right. Call the Roman.
Okay.
There's a lot there.
I know.
Thank God it's on tape.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Summers?
Yes.
Ms. Tingle?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Sonnen?
Yes.
Okay.
I can go. I mean, we also need to accept Nick Smith's resignation. I don't believe we've done that yet. Or did we?
I don't think it was done. We can, we can do it. Reverb us. Motion to accept Nick Smith's resignation.
Second. Mr. Summers?
No.
Ms. Tingle?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Sonnen?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes. And just for awareness, there are six seats upon council in November. So we need a lot of people to run for council this year. And I encourage that to happen. Thank you.
Mr. Summers?
Yes.
For the order.
Oh, thank you. And a, anybody listening at home, thank you for those that came out and helped over the weekend for the youth baseball and softball so they could play this weekend.
Ms. Tingle?
A couple of things. The parade was great for the baseball, softball to start. But also thank you to the street guys who've been going along and digging out the edges along the streets and straightening it up and making it look much better. They, they've been working really hard and they're very thorough in getting it done. And that's, that's not easy work. So kudos to them for getting it all done. Makes things look much better.
Thank you. I'd like to echo Ms. Tingle's sentiments. Crabtree Field looks great, the bank. And thank you, I believe, to the star facility for giving us those guys. And of course, our guys are supervising them. The streets are looking better and better. I mean, they were, they were off Canal Street. On another street today, I saw on Washington Street, I believe they were going down and cleaning up.
They're getting all that, where the grass is growing.
Edging it and everything and, and making the curbs real.
Yes. Making it much better.
So thanks for that. And all, of course, all of our utility guys, our police department, keeping the city safe and healthy. And with that, Mr. Sherman?
Uh, nothing.
Mr. Sonnen?
I'd just like to wish everyone a nice evening, safe journey home and congratulations soon.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right. With that, executive session, I mean, a motion to go into executive session. ORC 121 dash 22, the personnel legal matters. I'll make that. I'll second that. Including in, inviting in Mr. Toy and Mr. Roy.
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Sonnen?
Clement?
Yes.
Yes.